It's now five thirty, I'd like to call the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two Calvin County Council meeting on. John, may I?
Yes, sir. Lord, for your presence, could you just give thanks, give us the wisdom to do these things to the best of the people, this can be Lord. And all we do is glorify and pray for Christ and amen.
We have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
I can second any further discussion. Holy people, aye.
Aye.
Holy, likewise, aye. Do we have any public comment on the agenda? Anyone have any comment on the agenda? Harry Dunn, we will move down to public comments or other matters, anybody have any comments on other matters? Harry Dunn. You're calling the public hearing in order this twenty twenty-two dash nine. In order to provide for the appropriation of funds and levy taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three. For the operation, debt service, building of funds, food services of the public schools of Calvin County. And on the very Calvin Technical College. The Calvin County Disabilities and Special Needs Board. Including the elderly and residents. To provide positive versus the fund. Provide otherwise for the failure of public education. In Calvin County, anyone have any comments? On our order twenty twenty-two dash nine. That is third reading. No one have any comments, I will tell the motion for approval of this twenty twenty-two dash nine.
Some move.
Second.
I can move a second any further. Holy people, aye.
Aye.
Holy, likewise, aye, have a motion for approval of the minutes two thirteen twenty twenty-two.
Some move.
Second.
I can move a second any further. Holy people, aye.
Aye.
Holy, likewise, aye, have it. Anyone have any committee reports?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No.
Any appointments?
No, sir.
No.
No proclamation? Under appearances, we have Ms. Deborah Jameson, Food Policy Counsel.
Good evening, and thank you for having me, let me first of all apologize. Thank you so much for having me, I want to first of all apologize because I missed the last meeting. For certain circumstances, but thank you for allowing me to come back and reschedule this time to be with you. I'm representing the tri-county health network that's actually a part of TRMC. The Regional Medical Center and the outreach arm for the hospital. And the Food Policy Council is a new initiative that we're trying to implement throughout the tri-county area. In fact, when I leave here, I've got to rush to Banburg County because we have a food gathering there. And I gave you a copy of what will happen at a food gathering so that you would be able to see it. And I think I also left copies of the CHIP, which is the Community Health Improvement Plan. There will be another one that'll be coming out. And so I wanted you to also see what would happen in those food gatherings. So what is the Food Policy Council? It is an opportunity for all the stakeholders in the community, from local government, farmers, people who receive SNAP and WIC. Anyone in the community who has an interest in food. And if you, everybody, food touches everybody's lives. And so the Food Policy Council is an attempt to gather all people that want to serve on the council to help govern ways, to help govern ways to create policies that will give healthy access to more of the citizens and rural communities. The Food Policy Council is actually statewide. So this is a new initiative to bring the Food Policy Council to this area. So what am I responsible for? I met with Mr. John and explained to him what the county would be, what their role would be, which is to help us navigate the policies around food. Also, he gave me some insight into getting farmers involved. Because as you know, we really economically right now, it's actually probably cheaper to buy directly from a farmer than it is to go into a grocery store. So we want to make sure that everybody has a voice in how, who that access is determined. Not too long ago, you were strapped without a grocery store. And so that would be something that the council would be able to help. All the other areas, the outlying areas, Fort Myl, Long Star, all the other communities who are considered to be food deserts where there's not a grocery store within bounds. So that, having that kind of input from all the people in the community who have a stake in how food is able to be distributed throughout the county. So that's in a nutshell what the Food Policy Council will do. And it will be made up of citizens and also council members if they desire to be. And I'll take any questions you have.
All right, we don't have anything by action on this, right?
Oh, yes, sir.
Information on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me just ask you a question.
Sir.
Is anything at council that you all expect the council to do now? Just waiting on y'all, here for y'all and anything that can be put?
Not at this time, sir. What we, one of the things that the organization that has responsibility for developing the Food Policy Council, we do the food distributions and then doing the food distribution for the community. And so we're looking at ways that we can continue to do that and then gain more information about the community while we're doing the food distributions. So not at this time, we don't have anything for you to act on at this time.
Thank you, may I ask, anybody else have any questions?
Are y'all, like, do y'all coordinate? I know we have a few food distribution through Harvest Hope or something in town. So do we all, if that happens over there by, behind season business? Do y'all work with them in any kind of way, or are they part of your plan, or how does that work?
Well, we want, we want to work with other organizations. That's typically what happens with the tri-county health network is we go into the community and actually do the distribution for them through grants that we've gotten and through the corporation. Actually, St. Matthews, St. Matthews is probably, Calvin County has actually probably been one of our greatest supporters in doing those distributions. Our focus is on healthy food produce only. We don't do anything that's not produce. Because we want to make sure that people understand, number one, the correlation between eating fruit and vegetables and eating more of those things and diabetes, hypertension, and obesity. And one other thing that we've added is also cancer. So on our surveys that we do in the community, if accurate asks, if you've been diagnosed with any of those things. So we try to stay away from a lot of the things that are not healthy.
Thank you, Jill. Next on the agenda is Mr. Joyce, the emergency beatment ordinance.
Good afternoon, everyone. I, I come in a day, I think a week or two ago, the council and administrator issued an emergency beatment against the place that I had. And when I come to find out that a lot of the things that was said about what happened, nobody actually happened on the property, it don't really happen. Statement came up, man did. That statement, that never tells you that a man got shot, got killed on the property. That did not happen, but that's what they written up. And you write a thing and you read it and understanding the law and writing the law. And I also asked the question, how does an ordinance get to be adopted? From my understanding, that a law, an order to get to be adopted, it has to be brought to attention, read three times, adopted, and so-called amended. This ordinance, I found out about it, it already happened, did, all these things had already been done. And I did not have a chance to come in and, if it read it three times, I'd have a chance to come in and say what I had to say about it. You know, because I think it was unfair because it's only targeted toward my establishment. Which I think that's descriptive to it. It was just to my establishment and none of these things actually received credit there. And they said the council, we need to do an emergency session. And the beatment, they came out with this, this order. Given the sheriff all his power over private property. I still say my goodness, he's a private party on private property. And the sheriff also said that he did not have the power to even come in and do anything about it. But the council gave him some type of authority, I don't know if it made it up, or whatever it is, the emergency thing, a beatment. And came in and actually made it to a hearing, and the judge ruled for the sheriff. But I came back to where it started. It started here at council, that's where I come back to, even though I didn't get what I wanted at the, at the air. And I have not been charged with any type of criminal activity. I'm still here, I'm not locked up, I didn't get a ticket or anything. So I'm trying to figure out if I didn't get charged with anything. And a public nuisance, I think nuisance order has to be read right three times, from my understanding. And that has not been done, so the power that y'all gave the sheriff could not be even effective until it's read three times. The nuisance order, so that's why he classified it as a nuisance. So it had not been read three times, so the power he gave to him would not be effective. I'm asking the county council right now to go in and reconsider.
Let me just ask you a lot of questions. Did you go before the magistrate?
Yes, I did.
Okay, well, what happened was the county council, you know, I can't get into the beatment on this issue. Because the county council, I don't even know what your place had. The county council didn't just happen to make a rule. This was brought to us by the sheriff department, because the list of stuff that we have here, I think it was seven items.
Right.
They listed, and that's why we gave them the authority to shut it down immediately, because that's what they told us. We don't patrol.
Okay.
And then you were supposed to go before the magistrate.
Right.
Whoever, and he was supposed to decide. We don't make that decision, we just, because they asked us for that emergency. We didn't pop up and just say, we're going to do an emergency on Mr. Gates. I just want to let you know that. So it wasn't the council, I mean, we get the plan, but the council did what we were asked to do.
By the sheriff?
Yeah. So again, you were supposed to go before the magistrate. And the magistrate, you and the sheriff were supposed to work something out, so I don't know, I still don't even know what happened with that. It wasn't to shut you down, I don't want to shut anybody's business down. But the information, I don't want to read it out, because what he gave, I'm sure you familiar with it.
Right.
And that's what they gave us. The only thing we could go, we were sure the sheriff wasn't lying to us on what he brought to us, so that's the only thing I'm saying. And that's what they gave, gave the council.
Yeah. Okay, but I can say a lot of those things that he brought for you did not happen. That sentence was read through.
So, Mr. Gates, did you bring that before the judge when you saw him?
I did, yeah. I don't want to play that card, but the white pile structure, the reason why he didn't get charged, he couldn't check the court. Because he already had planned a lot of that night. But it didn't work out that way. You were already closed down when it came. I can say I wasn't charged with doing nothing illegal. Nothing, I didn't charge anything.
So you did go in front of the judge?
I didn't.
Okay, that's my, that was my own question.
Okay. So the council does not have any authority to look back at the oppositions that were brought for you?
No, because I think, well, what, what was the outcome of the hearing? I don't think any of us met the hearing, I don't, I don't even know what you.
He ruled to shut, the chief deputy is back here, should I call him both? I mean, chief, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I think he wanted to know what was the outcome of the hearing, if it was a six.
I don't want this turning to a court.
No, no, yeah.
This, this, this should have been handled at that meeting with the judge.
It was.
So, I mean, it definitely, we can't rule over a judge.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, I understand.
What I was going to explain is, so we've had the initial, basically, which is kind of like a problem calls hearing. The judge ruled that the emergency existed and to keep the order in place currently. So there's another hearing on the seventh of July, which is the Fifth Amendment hearing, which is kind of a constitutional entry possession type hearing. And then there's a final thirty day hearing, I think on the seventh. But at this point, the judge, it's just told that, basically, the emergency order is upheld by the court. The court has recognized it, and basically, this is his time and our time to put our cases together, for and against.
Matt, can you acknowledge just that Mr. Gates's complaint that it was emergency ordinance and it should have had three reads? I think in the office, the emergency ordinance and court upholds that, and I'm sure the sheriff office has understood well. You don't have to have the one reading, is that correct?
Correct, that was brought up, that was brought up at the initial hearing and the judge.
So the requirement for three readings is not applicable, is that correct?
The judge upheld the legal.
So the process, the process is ongoing. Nothing to counsel.
Final, right. To make that order permanent, it would be.
Nuisance have to read right.
Right, but this ordinance is in effect currently, it's just a sixty day temporary order basically for you. And now it's in the court's hands. So the judge had our hearing on the seventh or whatever it is coming up, for the Fifth Amendment, be the next time you get to go in front of the judge and explain this side.
What, Mr. Ketch, was this explained to you at that, at that hearing?
He explained to y'all about the follow-up was going by.
Okay. That, that's, that's all we're going, is following the law. So I mean, it's still ongoing, so I mean, if it was playing, it's not our place to explain it on second time.
Okay, all I want to do is go back where you started.
And I'll be glad to talk to you.
All right, yeah, you finish outside if you need to. We need to carry on our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. John Walsh, Association of Counties.
Mr. Boyd, thank you for coming. Thank you very much, good evening. My name is John Ledge, I'm with the South Carolina Association of Counties. And I was asked to come to just kind of address the questions surrounding potential referendum on questions of a change in the form of county government from the council or government to the council administrator. Let me begin by just saying that, very briefly, the difference between the two are that with the current council form of government is that as, council is a body, you are both the legislative and the administrative head of government. Where in the council administrator form, you as council would be the, you would retain all of the legislative authority that you have to address ordinances, to address individual county policies that you have now. But that the administrative duties would be placed with a professional administrator. In many ways, you already operate in that form, having hired an administrator to handle most of the administrative duties that you have now. That is the same for the other five counties that currently operate with the council form of government. All of them, while council retains administrative oversight, each of them have hired a professional CAO of some, of some form, whether it is named an administrator or a couple of them actually use the word county director. I will note that of the six counties, one county, so the county already has given third reading on the question of a referendum, changing their form of government to a county administrator. That will be on the general election ballot this November. They have operated like Calvin County is a council form of government since the enactment of the Home Rule Act at the end of nineteen seventy-five.
Go ahead and finish, and then I'll ask. You, you basically, all right. I will be the first to tell you that I've been on this council for six years. When I first came on here, I really did not know that there were four forms of government. When I found out what we were under, I started looking at how we could get out from under the council form of government. And it really boils down, and you correct me when I'm wrong, okay? In the state statute, it says that as a council form of government, we are both the legislative and the administrative form of, of branch of government.
Yes, sir.
And as such, we are the administrators of the county.
Ultimately, yes.
Ultimately, so everything that the administrator does is done on our behalf.
Yes.
Now, currently, we, we operate pretty much the same way that council administrator does. But we do it by local ordinance passed by the council back in the seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine timeframe when the home rule was, was being codified.
Yes.
So we're not asking for any more, actually, we're not asking for any more by asking to change the form of government. We're not asking much change in how the government runs and what, and what a citizen could expect to come up here and how they were expected to be treated. Now, what we would be doing would be saying that we, we want to do what we're doing, but do it under state statutes as opposed to local ordinance, in my opinion.
Yes, in effect, what happens is that the administrator's duties, which right now, I believe, are done either through your ordinances or through a contract. The administrator's duties would become statutory, which, under the council administrator statute, the administrator's duties are limited to those duties which are provided in the statute, which are basically.
Right.
The administrator oversees the personnel of the county that, other than those that work for elected officials or appointed officials. The, the administrator also oversees the budget, providing council with all of the reports at the beginning of the budget process and then overseeing appropriations once it's passed.
The budget is still passed by this body.
Yes, because the budget is a legislative.
So we're, we're not, we would not be giving up much of our power in doing that in what we did through ordinance, okay, years ago. And, and I want to, I want to assure my constituents, okay, being the people of my district, that when I ask for this, it's not going to cost them any additional funds. I mean, other than the cost of running a referendum, once that's done. We're not looking at something that's going to add on taxes or anything like that. We're just looking at how we administer, how our county is administered. I would also ask you, and if, and if you can correct me if I'm wrong, power, I've heard the word used that we're giving up our power. Power implies that we have a certain amount of knowledge, which because we're part-time, we can't have that, that level of knowledge in all of these administrative small decisions, in my opinion. We're not giving up power, we are, we've given up some of the administrative powers, but along those same lines, we are changing a level of accountability, shifting it from us as the laypeople sitting up here. And we're shifting that accountability to the administrator as well. And I want to assure the people that, that we still maintain the power to hire, and more importantly, to fire the administrator if we not gave what we're looking for. So we're not, am I right, Mr. Ledge?
Yes, you are.
And, and saying that we are not really giving up our power to do things like pass ordinances, to pass the budget, approve the budget or disapprove of the budget. In order for the administrator to change categories of monies within the budget, how he spend them, he would have to come back to us for budget adjustments. I guess what I'm saying, John, is as I, I'm retired superintendent of schools. Basically, I was shocked to find out that, that the county ran so differently from the way all the school districts in the state currently run with the, with the head administrator who has the day-to-day operations under him. But he must act in accordance with the ordinances, the budget, et cetera, all the votes that are taken by council.
Yes. And my.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I cleared that up.
And then, really what it comes down to is not necessarily question of authority, it's questions of administration. And what is ultimately every form of government? And voter has to ask, what is the most efficient, effective means to provide services for citizens?
I want to key in on one word you used there, efficient and subservient, that would be effective. But an efficient government is one where people can walk through those two doors across the hall and get a timely answer to their question and are not told that he does not have the authority to make that decision without waiting till the next time this council meets. And that is particularly important, in my opinion, when we are recruiting major industries and stuff and those, those captains of industry. They don't want to be heard, well, you can spend that five, that fifty million dollars, but you're going to have to wait, you know, two weeks to get an answer on whether you could spend it or not. Because they want to know what the position of the county is at that time. And that would be certainly, they would have to come for us to, to us for anything like change in tax structure from tax to fee at lieu of and all that kind of stuff. We would still have that option.
Yes.
And, and it's my understanding. And at that point, like I say, though, for day-to-day operations, can you, you know, help me with this road going into where I'm going to build this building? That could be handled as administrative function, once the money is budgeted by us into the proper accountors to do that. And that's my understanding.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You are correct.
I, I would like to add one thing since we are being broadcast, I presume, right? And just to say that there are more than just these people in this room that are listening to us. But we, I, I don't, I think everybody that sits on this, on this panel up here, on this council, has the best interest of Calvin County at heart. We're not looking to make strict, fast-moving changes. I have been on here for six years. Ever since I learned, ever since I went to my indoctrination and found out about the four, the four forms of government, I have not been satisfied with the fact that I'm on a council where, where we don't have an administrator who is as accountable as I feel like he should be for his decisions. We're not looking to make strict, fast-moving changes, I have been on here for six years, ever since I learned, ever since I went to my indoctrination and found out about the fo- the four forms of government, I have not been satisfied with the fact that I'm on a council where, where we don't have an administrator who is as accountable as I feel like he should be for his decisions and, and has the, has the power, given him the power, to use the budget that we pass the way that I feel like he should be, should have that power, I'd just like go over there and say that.
Anyone else?
Just, just a question, we can't, so the fifty million dollars that you, you said, so, we can't get the captain of industry comes up and says, okay, we have the fifty million dollars to finish, he makes a decision, right, can we commit to it, feel what you're saying?
I, I did not, uh, we're not committing to the fifty million dollars, I'm just saying that those guys out there are spending big bucks.
I understand.
And, and, and they might, they might have a decision that they need to make.
Well, that's the fifty million dollar investment into Calhoun County.
Correct, right, yeah, no, I'm not saying us spending the fifty million dollars, I'm saying that guy over there is wanting to put a fifty million dollar investment in the county for me, and if he can get a more timely decision, because he may go up to a neighboring county and because they've got council administrator form of government, that administrator may be able to say, yes, I've got money in my budget, I can fix that for you. If he can't get that same response from our county, then he may go to another county just because, I, a- a- and, John, this is out of your, I mean, beyond what you're talking about, but I'm just saying, that, that's some of the things that I consider is, you know, timeliness, efficiency, effectiveness, effec- efficient and effective government that is actually s- within our, our administrator's, uh, job description, that he can make those decisions and that he is accountable for those decisions to us. Now, he make the wrong one or too many of the wrong movements, then certainly we have the power to replace him, but I can, I will tell you right now, having been, having sat in the top seat of, of a, of a bigger budget, school district-wise than we have here, I wouldn't have been interested in doing this job because I wouldn't have had the authority that, that I needed to do the job effectively, if I had to wait every time the school board met to, to get answers to my problems, uh, I had, I, I, I realized that I was putting my job and, at that time, my, my teacher credential on the line about the decisions, I, but, but I knew I was accountable for those decisions, so I, I guess that, that's where I'm coming from.
Well, I would say, at least if you look at the history in terms of how we recruited industry and commercial business in this county, period four, I mean, it looks like we've done a pretty good job of getting them in, those commitments had been made and, and have been approved at the proper time.
Well, I would just say, and, and I, I, I don't know, uh, I, I don't know that we can look at history, uh, for us, and I, I, I'm gonna give you, um, to, to answer that. God put our eyes in, in the, in the front of our head so we, we look to the future, okay, he didn't put them in the back of our head, so we can look back at history to get examples, okay, we can do that, but the fact of the matter is, we've got to look at the growth that is, and, and the changes that are coming to our community that need immediate attention as opposed to the way it was back in the day when we were totally agrarian, pretty much, we had very little industry, industry itself, things, things didn't move as fast back then. Uh, so, I, I, I'm, I'm looking for something that will make us more effective, make us more effective in our jobs, and, like I say, we, we can look down the line now, minus one seat, and we, you know, we can guess at who's going in there, and then we know that, uh, we got one person who's probably gonna be sitting next to me, right, okay? That being said, we can look now, but this council changes on a dime, okay, this council changes every, has the potential of changing every two years, okay? And by, by saying that, I am a prime example, when I went to the school district, I, I worked there for four and a half years as the superintendent, I put my job on the line, and what it cost, eh, what, I don't say it cost me because my, my, my sister called me and congratulated me, actually, the night that the school board voted not to renew my contract, because basically what she said was, you didn't even have to decide when you were gonna retire, you, you, you're, you're, you don't even have to go home and think about when, when you're gonna retire. But the fact of the matter is, I knew what I was putting on the line when I, when I made the decisions for the district, that I made and pushed for that, and I wrote a three-two split in my favor for until, until, until it changed to a three-two favor against me, and that's how I ended up out there. So, I'm not sa- I, 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 I've seen it from so many different perspectives, I guess what I'm saying, John, and, um, I appreciate you coming and if I, I didn't ask you many questions, but I hope you would have corrected me had I made any incorrect statements.
I'm a lawyer, so I would have.
Okay, that's good, okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Loach, I just wanted to, um, I guess all of us made comments instead of asking you a question, but I just wanted to say, I think this form of government would be something similar to a company with a plant that, I mean, they're making decisions, they have board of directors to report to, and they gave, gave them all the authorities, but he didn't do the job, the bottom line is, we still have the power, I mean, am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
That we, you know, he didn't do what we wanted him to do. Um, I think what we're trying to do, I think, is save a form of micromanaging to where five councilmen, the people don't know who to go to, and they can go to this, this one guy, he didn't have to call all five of us, I, you know, I've had, even when I wasn't the chairman, uh, I won't call a neighbor that had a minister that was, called me seven, eight times a day, I wasn't even the chairman, so, I'm, I'm just saying, I think this would be a better fit, but we are pointing it out there to the public, I mean, it's gonna be up to them, it's not like we are, uh, just throwing something down somebody's throat, and I think that's what we wanted to do when I was approaching, by the way, yeah, let the boarders call me and we'll talk to my top one guy half an hour a day, or give them my opinion, I'm not gonna force anything on you, but I think what we just do is, we think why so many counties are going that way and why we wanna just stay in the, in the dark like that, and, uh, that's just was, was my thought on it, not, and like I told them at the last meeting, I had to decide on, well, we want to decide, but we, we just want to have a referendum, we not, we not gonna make that decision, I'm doing that to be up to the public.
Yes, but state law, you have to be done by.
I want, I want the people to know that, do not try to throw anything, and that's why we have these, uh, readings and stuff, now, we really have a public hearing, sure, with the last one, and we wanna have people input on it, that's what we wanna do here.
That ain't, well, and not only that, James, back to the people's input, state law actually goes so far as to say that we have to have two public hearings on this particular issue, I think, is, um, is that correct?
No, actually, when, when you are proposing a referendum, you don't have to.
Oh, that's right.
Have a public hearing.
Propose the referendum, we're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like I say, um, I just wanted known that this is not something, I realize that our constituents are, this is the first time they're really hearing much about it, just within the last few weeks, but the fact of the matter, it has been a conversation, uh, since I've been on this council, which has been six years, about whether to do it and when to do it, I, I, and, um, we're not looking to, see, so I think I'm speaking of all of us, we're, we're not looking to give up the, our ability to run the county.
No, I, I, I mean, it's not giving up our power, the vote still stops here at this council.
Right.
Our constituents still call us and they've got a problem.
Yeah.
It makes more so my administrator accountable for his decisions.
Right.
More so than protect, really, the protection of us.
Right.
Um, I mean, right now, we can brunt of the, the strict decision he makes, we brunt of.
Right, it becomes our liability.
And, but he's still protected.
Right. Well, and like I say, to the aver- to, to, I won't say average, so, so, I don't know who that is, I mean, I, you know, my doctor, I went and they read my blood work and they say, you just average, I mean, everything I had was good, you know, when I say good, it was within the average range, so I don't like to say necessarily average, but to the citizens of this county, they're really not gonna see a whole lot of difference in the way the county is run based on what we've been doing, it's just where, uh, where the liability and, 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 and it draws a really clear distinction between what are the administrative duties and what are the legislative duties that we have out there.
Right, it's not, and it's not taking away the authority, he can't go make a decision to bring a fifty million dollar project to this county, it's the day-to-day operation.
Day-to-day operation.
You don't say, well, let me call my councilman and I can let you know whether we can work on it.
Right.
This.
Well, like I say, that's why we bring it to the people.
Mr. Loach, let me ask you just one more question, don't go me through.
Yes, sir.
Um, I heard you say we didn't have to have a vote here, but we can have a vote.
Of, of, certainly.
Okay, and I, you know, I, 'cause I, like I said, I want as much public input as I can get, I wanna hear what they gotta say, and I guess we will have when they vote, but I still don't want people to be ignorant when they go in the booth, and I think with much information that they can get and understand, we probably be better.
Yeah.
We did have a vote here.
Very important, and I think that's why I'm spending so much time, because I do know that we, you know, we do have a couple of people at home watching what we're doing too, and listening to why, why it's been brought to this.
Anyone else have any questions or comments, Mr. Loach? Thank you, sir, for coming down again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next time, put your card on the wall, pal, just.
Okay, we don't have any more pub-, uh, public appearances, um, no, appearances, um, down to resolutions, okay, uh, rev- resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution established to, and agreeing to participate in the Los Prader Regional Home Consortium. John, nothing real fancy about that, huh?
It's something they've asked for us to do, we do it, uh, we do it yearly, uh, so, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion, probably move a second, any further discussion, all you can, aye?
Aye.
Or is likewise, aye, it's headed, uh, do we have anything on the old business, John, nothing?
Yes, sir.
Have a new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You got the ordinance, it's, your ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, second reading, an ordinance to call the public referendum in Calhoun County, South Carolina, to determine whether the qualified elections, electors wish to keep the present council form of government, five council members or adopt the council administration form of government for five council members, that's what we just discussed.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we give a second reading to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen.
Second.
Probably move a second, any further discussion, all you can, aye?
Aye.
Or is likewise, aye?
No.
Uh, it's headed, okay, twenty, twenty-two dash seventeen, second reading, an ordinance, of ordinance for adoption of amendments to the Calhoun County zoning ordinance.
You, John, you want to explain that, sir?
We've had a lot of phone meetings recently, make sure we, we nailed this down for the public, what we're, what we're.
Rich will be glad.
Yeah, I'm glad, Rich.
I don't want it to get confused.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Council, so this is the second reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance, uh, what we focused on in this zoning ordinance amendment was to create a, a unified table, make the ordinance easier to read, we updated the, um, parking requirements table, and the other, uh, structural change was to incorporate the existing mobile home ordinance into the zoning ordinance, so there were no substantial changes to the ordinance, there was nothing added or deleted as far as what's permitted in existing zoning districts, uh, so the ordinance is just more user-friendly now.
I guess, I, I, I wanna admit that I haven't really read the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
I looked at Richmond's zoning ordinance and they got a big table, miles long, where you could look at what, what falls under each zoning, the zone, and then it tells it, yes or no, you can do this in the city, and I guess that's what we're adding.
Yes, it is, so, so currently, in our zoning ordinance, if, if you have a district, say, a rural neighborhood, you go to that section, the ordinance, and there's two pages that tell you what's permitted and what's not permitted, uh, that language, part of that language is still in there, but the majority of that, what's permitted and not permitted, has been moved to one table, so you go to one location, you find your zoning classification, and you go down and you read through a list of uses, and it, like you said, it'll either say P isn't permitted or N is not allowed.
Right. All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, and I wanna assure people, that I assure people to understand, we are not changing any zoning lines or anything from this one. We're just, we're just changing the look.
Yes, sir, that, that would be a zoning map amendment, this is a text amendment.
Right, okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, or second reading?
Second.
Probably move a second, any further discussion, all you can, aye?
Aye.
Or is likewise, aye, it's headed? Okay, down to the ministry, is there anything?
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, Council, uh, I know that you've met him, but I wanna go public with this, uh, we've got Mr. Michael Montgomery, who is our, we've hired, uh, for our general counsel, he is with Robinson Gray Law Firm in Columbia, uh, he is a local, uh, homeboy from St. Matthews, Calhoun County, and, uh, so we're, we're thankful to have him, uh, we wanna say for the last time, I wanna thank Heath Taylor for his service and what he did to Calhoun County and bringing a lot of knowledge and common sense, uh, to, to the, uh, to the county. Um, the second thing I've got here is, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, again, Red Rock Development, Calhoun Land Partners, uh, for the spec building announcement, uh, groundbreaking we had last week, uh, this spec building will be the largest in the region, uh, just shy of a half a billion square foot, uh, and we were already getting questions and requests for proposals on that building, so, uh, it's already looking positive there. And then the last thing, certainly, I wanted to remind the, uh, the viewers of our St. Matthews Fireworks show, uh, will be this Saturday, starting at six-thirty, uh, seven o'clock, uh, we'll have a band, and then the fireworks will come after that, so, uh, please be available for that as you can, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else have anything?
They haven't responded by.
Try Kenny Elijah Killaw.
Yes.
Anything else?
Okay, anyone have anything else, anyone in the press have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Probably move a second, any further discussion, all you can, aye?
Aye.
Or is likewise, aye, it's headed, thank you, everybody, members?